I thank the Lord for this wonderful opportunity God has given me to come to you this evening.
उन्हें सांखले वेले नमो मदिलिदु देवरून नान्गे कोटंतय उन्हें सदा अवकाश कागिन आलो कर्तनिगे वन्डन एनसल्स्टेने
I came to Mysore many years ago.
नेक वर्षकल हिंदे प्रिया सौदर मयसुरिका पन्दीदर
After that now it's more than twenty years I think.
सुमारे इप्पोत वर्षकल अंतर आयरबहुदु सुमारो
I heard the word Mysore probably because of uncle VP Jacob.
मयसुरी नावन्ह एसरो अंकल VP जेकेबर अवरा मुकांत्र वागिया अवन्ह एसरो परिष्ठवायत
In my childhood what entered my mind is VP Jacob Mysore.
प्रिया सौदर अवन्ह बाले वस्तेले VP जेकेब एम्मा दागिरे मयसुर एम्मा दागना मांकिता दागियोगितो
I think that is my first introduction to the word Mysore.
अदु प्रिया सौदर मयसुरीन कुड़िदादन तो उन्होंचिका दादन तो दुपीटिया दागिदे
In the first gathering of believers in Mysore along with brother VP Jacob, my father KG Kurian also was there.
सो मयसुरी नले प्रथम वागिया अवन्ह प्रार्मवादन तो अवन्ह सभेले VP जेकेबर वागिरा प्रार्मवादन तो मयसुरी नावन्ह सभेले प्रिया सौदर तंदियादन तो सो नकेजी कुरियन रोरुस अवन्ह समयले लिदर
Anyway, I am very happy that the Lord made it possible for me to come here.
देवर निवन सदा अवकाश निले सेरिपरवागे नान्गे अवकाश न कोटत कागिन आनो तन्नी पुटंगंड सल्स्टेने
May the Lord bless our time together.
नम्म देवर ताने नम्म उन्हें समय नातन आशिवत्सली
We are here to listen to God's word.
देवर वक्त न केल्डिकागिन नाव सेरिबंदि देवे
When we hear God's word,
नम्म देवर वक्त न केल्वागा
We have a great responsibility to obey that.
नम्म नम्म मेले तोड्डन तो जाब दारी इतना वादिके विदेयर आगिरुद कागिन
The problem with us is that we are so used to hearing God's word often that we just hear, appreciate and go and do nothing about it.
नम्म लिर्वन्त समस्येन एम्मा दागिरे वक्यदके एस्ट्रो परिमटिके न परिष्ठवा राकिदे देवम्मा दागिरे नाव तन्न केल्टेवे केल्टेवे अदानंतर नाव तन्न मिच्छिन न आगया येनुसाय अदके कार्यकत्तमारण द हागिन न होटोगुतेवे
I'll tell you a small story that I have heard.
नाव केल्डन तो उन्होंसन न कथियन नानीमिके हेल्टेने
Once a little boy asked his father,
उन्हें सारो पचिक्को हुडिगन तन्तन्दिग आतन केल्डनो
Shall I ask you a question?
नानी उन्हों प्रश्न न केल्लाम दागिन
Will you answer me?
नान्गे अवन्ह उत्तरन कोर्तिरो
Father said yes, I will answer.
तंदिये केल्डन तो कणितवायन नाव उत्तरन कोर्तेने
The boy said, "This is the question."
अगुरुगन हेडिदन इधु अवन्ह प्रश्ने
There is a pond full of water in a particular place.
उन्हें निर्दिष्ट अवन्ह स्थलदले उन्होंद कोलाविदे व कोलाविदे नीर नीरिदे
There is a big tree standing by the side of that pond.
अवन्ह खेरिया बतियले डोटदान तो अवन्ह मरविदे
And one branch of that tree is leaning over the pond, over the water.
अमरद उन्हु कोम्बे अवन्ह कोलाद कोलाद कड़गियादो भागिनिंतिदे
On that branch, four frogs are sitting.
अवन्ह कोम्बे मेले नालकु कप्पे कोले किवे
One frog decides to jump into the water.
अदले मेले तो उन्हु कप्पे नान्ह नीर नले हारलकागितीर्मालमारितो
How many frogs are left on the branch?
ईगा अवन्ह कोम्बेली यस्ट कप्पे कोले उलिदिवे
The father said, "It's so easy."
तंदियादिदर अदु सुधुपावादन तो अवन्ह प्रश्ने
Four minus one is three.
नालकु वाइनस वन्ध अदु मोर एम्मा दागित तंदियादिदर
The boy said, "Your answer is wrong."
अगुरुगन नेडिदन निमा उत्तर तपु
Then what is the answer?
अगुरु उत्तर वेनो
The boy said, "Four."
अवुरुगन नेडिदन नालकु
Father asked, "How?"
अगुरतंद केल्डर हेगे
I only said, "One frog decided to jump." That's all I said.
नान्ह नेडिदन तो अदु उन्हु कप्पे तो जम्प जम्प आलिके तीर्मानमारित आस्टे
I did not say that frog jumped.
नानो कप्पे जम्प आलित एम्मा दागिन नान्ह नेडिला
So, it is still sitting on that branch.
अदु इन्नुसाकम अमर कोम्बेला दुपुतिदे
That is very true about us.
सिरे अदु ई उन्हु मातु निजवागि नम्म जीवितकले दुसत्यवादन तो उन्होंनिंतिदे
We have been deciding to jump many times.
नाव नेक बारी जम्प आलेवेको हार्बेक एम्मा दागित तीर्मानमार्तेवे
But we are still sitting on the branch.
अदु इन्नुसान अकोम्बेले नाव कोर्तिदेवे
Oh, I will change my lifestyle.
नान्ह ना लाइफस्टाइल ना चेन मार्तेने
I will rectify this.
नान्ह दुसरी परिस्कोल्तेने
In this, I will be careful.
ई उन्हु विषयतन सन्सुन सुक्षमागिर्तेने
And we make some decisions.
नाव इनितकी तीर्मानगर नाव मार्तेवे
But nothing happens. We forget about that decision.
अदु येल्द येनुसाम मारदन नाव अम्मा दु तीर्मान नाव हागिमार्तबर्तेवे
So, many of us are still sitting on that branch after making that decision.
अनेक बार नम्मले अदेरी तियले नाव तीर्मान उन्हों मार्तमेले इन्नुसार एवं दु कोम्बेले नाव आइक कोर्तिदेवे
You see how dangerous that is.
प्रिया यस्ट आपाई करवान तो संगत एम्मा दाग कम्मनिसरे
So, tonight I want all of you to jump.
प्रिया राधिनी उन्हें रात्री वेले येल्दुसान नाव हार्बेक एम्मा दागिन नाव अपेक्षेने
Not just decide to jump,
बरी नान्ह हार्तने एम्मा दागित तीर्मानमार्वन तदला
Actually, we should jump.
निकंडित वागिसन नाव तन्न हार्बेको
That means if the Lord speaks to us, we must obey what the Lord says.
हागिम्दा गेडरे देवर नम्म जक्कायद मात्नाडिदरे नाव आतन हेडिदन तमातिगिन विदेयर आगेकास्टे
Otherwise, hearing of God's word is of no use.
इल्लेदि दरे नाव देवर वक्य न केले अदु वर्तवादन तो संगत आकतदे
The message God has laid on my heart tonight relates to every believer here.
नान्गे देवरून इमुन्ने सांखले वेले कटिरवान तो उन्हों बारोलंत उन्हों वक्यन एम्मा दागिन अदु प्रत्योप विश्वासिक अन्वायस्वन तो अवन्ह वक्य दागिदे
It has to do with children,
अदु मक्कारिग अन्वायस्वन तदु
Men and women,
सहोदरु सहोदरेरिको सन्वायस्वन तदु
Older folks,
रुद्धापददरुन तोरिगे
Young people,
यवनस्तरिगे
This message has to do with every life here.
ई उन्हु संदेश प्रत्योपरिको सन्वायस्वन तो उन्हु संदेश
Now, when you hear the message, you will understand what I meant by this.
नान्ह ई असन्देश उन्हों केल्वागा नान्ह येनुन उपेक्षु उद्देश्य आताइत नान्गे अगर्त्वाकतदे
I want you to turn with me to Ephesians chapter four.
एपेस्ट तोरिगे बर पत्रिके नाकने अध्याय द कड़गिन नम्म कम्मन नर्सरे
We will just read a little words.
केल्व वचनगरन नाव द वधिकोनन
Ephesians 4:27.
नाकने अध्याय इप्पत्ता येले न वचन शल रीड ब्रदर
Twenty-seven. Do not give place to the devil.
सैताननिगे अवकाश अप्पो द बेडिरे
Don't give place to the devil.
सैताननिगे अवकाश अप्पो द बेडिरे
Don't give him any room in your life.
निन्ह जीवितकले यादरीत उन्हों अवकाश अवन्ह सैताननिगे अप्पो द बेडिरे
That is the message tonight.
प्रिया अवन्ह संदेश उन्हु सांखले वेले दागिदे
Do we give room to the devil in our life?
नम्म जीवितकले सैताने उन्हों अवकाश अवन्ह कोर्तेवो
We would straight away say, "No, no, no. We are believers. We don't give room to the devil."
नान्ह नेडिवा गरुन तो राकिदे नाव विश्वासिकले नाव वारीते सैतानिग अवकाश कोरुदिले एम्मा दागिन
Now, at the end of this message, I will ask this question again.
ई उन्हु सत्य ई उन्हु संदेश द कड़ियले नान्ह मत्ते अवन्ह प्रश्न नान्के हेल्टेने
Then you must say whether we are giving place to the devil or not.
अगन नाव निवहर्बेको नाम निजवागि सैतानिगे नाव अवकाश उन्हों कोर्तायतने इल्लुएम्बुदागि निवहर्बेक
Now, everybody says, "No, no, we don't give place to the devil."
ई वगा कंडित वागिन नाव एरुन तो राकिदेवे कंडित वागिलाइलान नाव सैतानिग अवकाश कोरुदिले एम्बुदागि
Please wait for some time.
आर्न सुल्प समय निवताय तालमेंद कायरे
At the end, I will ask you this question again.
कड़ियले मत्ते नान्ह इदेव उन्हु प्रश्न नानीमिके केल्यो तो नागिदेने
Then you must honestly say whether we give place to the devil or not.
निव प्रामाणिको वगाकु उत्तर कोर्बेको कंडित वागिन सैतानिग अवकाश अप्पो देदान इल्लुएम्बुदागि
Now, I want to be very simple in what I say.
नान्ह हेल्डन तो बाल साल वागिन नानी संगत नान्के हेल्टेने
And I want to show you all that I say from God's word.
नान्ह हेल्डन तो एल्लु उन्हुसात देवर वक्य द मुकांत्र नानीमिके तोरिस्वन तो नागिदेने
We will go step by step, point by point, so that all of you will understand this message.
अदु नाव स्टेप बाय स्टेप वागिन नाव हंता हंता वागिन नाव संगतिगले नाव नोड़न तोरायन येल्दुसार अर्थवागिलिके गोवा गोहागिन नाव नोड़न तोरायरो
No one should go away from here saying, "Well, we didn't understand what that brother said."
सौदर एडिदन तो नम्म यारसार अर्थवागिलिले एम्बुदागि यारसाईलिन तो होगबार
All of you should say, "I really understood."
येल्दुसान निवहर्बेको नान्ह कंडित वागिन नान्गे अगर्त्वागिदे एम्बुदागि
And I'm going to jump.
नान्गे नान्ह हार्वन तो नागिदेने
Now, "Don't give place to the devil" is an instruction given by the Holy Spirit or a puzzle for believers.
इल्ले सैतानिग अवकाश अप्पो द बेडिरे एम्बुदागि परिष्ठित आत्पनु पोलु पोलु निवन्ह पुम्कांत्र वागिले एर्टारुन तो संगत नाव नोड़तेवे
I will come back to this verse and the context in Ephesians four little later.
नान्ह ई उन्हु वास्तवकन संदर्भु उन्हु यावका कॉन्टेक्स्ट एम्मा दागि नान्ह अदानंतर नान्ह बुन्दि निमिके तिर्स्तेने
Now, let us just focus on that one sentence, "Don't give place to the devil."
नान्ह सांखले वागिद कड़गिन नम्म कम्मन नर्सरो सैतानिगे अवकाश अवन्ह मारिपो द बेडिरे
We are told not to give place to the devil because he is seeking an entry to come inside.
सैतानिग अवकाश अप्पो द बेडिरे एम्बुदागि हेडिदे याके एम्मा गेडिरे सैताननु वलकडे नुसुलद आतनु प्रेक्तमार्तिदान एम्बुदागि
That is why we are told not to allow him.
आत्रिन्दले निव अवकाश अप्पो द बेडिरे एम्बुदागि अले बर्यातपटिदे
He is looking for an entry.
अलि उन्हु प्रवेशमालिकातनु अवकाश अवन्ह तो नोडितदाने
That is why we are told, "Don't give him an entry."
आत्रिन्दले अलि बर्यातपटिदे देवर सैतानिग अवकाश अप्पो द बेडिरे एम्बुदागि
The word of God says that.
देवर वक्य वारीते एम्मा तिर्स्वन तो नागिदे
He is looking for an entry.
अलि आतनु प्रवेशमालिल प्रेक्तमार्वन तो नागिदाने
Let us turn to the book of Job and chapter one.
योबन पुस्तका मुदले अध्याय के कम्मन नर्सरो
There Satan stands before God.
अलि सैताननु देवर मुद्द कानिस्कले तो अवन्ह चित्तन नाव नावली वोदुतेवे
And in verse seven, the Lord is asking you a question.
अलि येल्द वचनदले अलि प्रश्न न केल्वदन अले नाव नोड़तेवे
From where do you come?
निन्ह येल्दिन तो बंदियम्बुदागि अले देवर प्रश्न केल्वदन अले वोदुतेवे
Satan answered the Lord and said, "From going to and fro on the earth and from walking back and forth in it."
सैताने फोनिंग बूलोकदले संचरसुता अल्लले तिरुगुता इद्दु बंदिन एवं हेडिदनु
Where are you coming from?
निन्ह येल्दिन तो बंदि
What have you been doing?
निन्ह येनुन वार्तायति
Where did you go?
निन्ह येल्दिगे फोदि
What did Satan say?
सैतान एडिदन तमातेनु
I've been going up and down, back and forth.
सैतान एडिदन तमातन नान्ह बूलोकदले संचरसुता अल्लले तिरुगुता इद्दु बंदिन एम्बुदागि
That means all over the world I've been roaming around.
हागिम्दा गेडरे नान्ह बूलोकदले लास संचरसुता नान्ह बंदिदेन एम्बुदागि आतन हेल्टिदाने
Now, why do you think Satan was roaming around?
नान्ह याकिं सैतान ईरिते तिरुगुतादे एम्बुदागि आलोचनमार्तेरे
Is he a tourist?
आतिन तूरिस्ट
Going around seeing all the places in the world?
अलि लोकली लिवन तो अल्लास स्थलगण ना नोड़िकोन आतनु सुत्तार्तायत एम्बुदागि
Oh, let me have a look at Switzerland mountains.
अलि स्विचलिन न मोटन ना नोड़न एम्बुदागि
Let me see the Arabian Sea.
अरेबिन समुद्र ना नोड़न एम्बुदागि
Oh, let me see America.
अलि अमेरिका ना नोड़न एम्बुदागि
Tourist going around up and down, back and forth.
प्रवासिकन अलि तिरुगुता इल्ले तिरुगुता आतन होगुता बोर्तित अन्त व्यक्तियो
Is that what he is going around for?
अलि आगुन कार्यगणिकागिन अलि सैतान होगुतायदनो
Why is he going around?
याके आतन ईल सुत्तायदाने
To see places?
अलि सायगण नोडलिको ओक्तायदनो
No.
इल्ला
Do you know the answer to that?
इदिके निमिके उत्तर गोतुंडा
Looking for you.
निन्ह नान्ह उड़कुता तिरुगुतिदाने
Why is he going around?
अद याके सुत्तावुतिदाने
He is looking for you and me. That's why he is going around.
नान्ह नान्ह निन्ह नोड़िकोन आतन तिरुगुतायदन आजिलिन आतन सुत्तातिदाने
In this context, it is clear because he has been looking for a job also.
ई उन्हु संदर्भु तो अलि फर्स्ट वागिते सरपते योबन नु साथी हुड़कुता होगुता बन्ननो
So, Satan goes around looking for each one of us.
अद सैतान अलि संचरसुता प्रथम प्रबोपरन्नु आतनु हुड़कुता आतन तिरुगुतिदाने
How he can trap us?
यावरितिल नम्म बाले के पीड़िसले एम्बुदागि
How he can make our life miserable?
नम्म अवन्ह जीवित दुस्त सिद्धिकतलिके हेगे नान्ह पर्यत्थमार्तिले एम्बुदागि
You know Satan cannot take away our salvation.
नम्म अवन्ह रक्षणे न सैतान नितेगिलिकातो साद्यविला
I'm talking about believers.
नान्ह विश्वासिकले कोर्तागिन नान्ह मात्नार्तिदे
I hope all of you here tonight are believers.
अनान प्रयशन निस्तनील इर्वन्त येल्दुसान विश्वासिकले एम्बुदागि
Satan cannot take away your salvation.
निन्ह अवन्ह रक्षणे नातन तेगिलिका दुसाद्यविला
But Satan can take away the joy of your salvation.
अद सैतान नु रक्षणे आनंदवन आतनु कलकान तेगिदा आकबहुदु
He can mess up your life.
निन्ह अवन्ह जीवितन आतन दुस्त सिद्धिकतलिके आतन तल्लबहुदु
He can take away the effectiveness and usefulness of your life.
निन्ह अवन्ह जीवित द परिणाम कार्यादत्त जीवित नातन सम्पूर्ण वागितन तेगिदा आकबहुदु
He can take away your joy, peace and rest and satisfaction in your life.
निन्ह जीवित द अवन्ह शांति, समाधान, आनंद येल्लु सातनु कित्ता आकबहुदु
Did you know that?
अद निन्ह तर्तमारिको
That Satan can do these things?
सैतान ईल कार्यगण नामाड़बहुदे एम्बुदागि
That is why he is going around.
आत्रिन्दले आतन अल्लले संचरसुता तो तिरुगुतिदाने
To put you into trouble.
निन्ह नल समस्या सिक्सिसला आतन सुत्तातिदाने
Now, what does the New Testament say about this truth?
अद ई उन्हु सत्य द कोर्तागि वसोड़मरिका नम्म येनुन तिर्स्तदे
Oh, New Testament also says the same thing very clearly.
अद वसोड़मरिको सातने फर्स्ट वागित तिर्स्वन तो दागिदे
Peter's first epistle.
मुदले अवपेतन पत्रिके
And chapter five.
मुदले पेतन पत्रिके
Chapter five.
आइदन अध्याय
And verse nine.
ओम्बतन न वचन
First Peter, chapter five and verse nine.
मुदले पेतन पत्रिके आइदन अध्याय ओम्बतन न वचन
Be sober, be vigilant, because your adversary, the devil, walks about like a roaring lion seeking whom he may devour.
What?
1 Peter 5:9.
Was eight, Pragin, the verse.
Oh, yeah.
स्वस्थ चित्तरागिरे
Sorry, it is eight.
स्वस्थ चित्तरागिरे यचर वागिरे निमा विरोधागिरो सैताननु गर्जिस्वसिमहो दोपादियले यारनु नुंगलियां दुहुड़कुता तिरुगुताने
Be sober.
आर्त स्वस्थ चित्तरागिरे
That means be very serious minded. Be serious about this. That's the meaning.
आद इदर कोर्तागि निम्म गम्बिर वालो रागिरे स्वस्थ चित्तरागिरे एम्बुदागि आतन हेल्टिदाने
Be vigilant. That means be very, very careful.
निव यावागुसा एचर वागिरे
Why?
याके
Because your adversary, the devil, is walking like a roaring lion seeking whom he may devour.
याकेन निमा विरोधागिरो सैताननु गर्जिस्वसिमहो दिया पसिम्मा दोपादियले यारनु नुंगलियां एम्बुदागि आतन तिरुगुतिदाने
So, what we found in Job's book is confirmed here in the New Testament.
अद योबन पुस्तकदले येनुन नोड़ि देवो अदु पेतन पत्रिके अदु साबितपर्स्वन तले नाव नोड़तेने
Satan is going around looking for you and me.
सैतानु अल्लले सुत्तान नान्ह नु निन्ह नु हुड़कुता तो तिरुगुतिदाने
Seeking whom he may devour.
नान्ह यारनु हरिवाकले एम्बुदागि आतन सुत्तायदाने
Whom he may swallow.
नान्ह यारनु नुंगलियां एम्बुदागि आतन हुड़कुतिदाने
That is why he is going around.
आत्रिन्दले आतन अल्लले सुत्तात तिरुगुतायदाने
Therefore, what are we told to do?
अद नाव येनु मार्बेक्यम्मा दागिले बर्यातपटिदे
Be very serious and careful and vigilant.
आर्त स्वस्थ चित्तरागिरे यचर वागिरे निव इर्वन्ह एम्बुदागि अले बर्यातपटिदे
Are we serious and careful in our life?
प्रिया नम्म जीवितकले नाव स्वस्थ चित्तरागिरे नाव यचर वागिरे देवो
So that Satan will not touch us?
अद सैतान नम्म उम्मुट्टा दागिन नाव यचर वागिदे
Do we take precautions?
नाव इदरले यचरिके नाव इस्ताय देवो
Suppose you hear a news that a lion has come out of the Mysore zoo.
प्रयशन ई उन्हु सुदि तिरुति बंतियम्मा दाग तिरुकोले मयसुरी जूइन उन्हु सिम्मा तपिस्कोणिदे एम्बुदागि
Somehow it has escaped.
यावरितिल तो वाली न तपिस्कोणिदे एम्बुदागि
And it is roaming around in your area.
प्रयशन नम्म एरिया दले तिरुगुतायदे एम्बुदागि निव पैस कोरे
What will you do?
प्रयशन दिवन मार्तेरे
You will immediately call all the brothers and sisters and tell them, "Be careful, lion is coming your way."
अद प्रयशन निम्म अल्लान्ह निमा सोदर सोदरिगे स्नेहिरिगे कालमारी यचर वागिरे सिम्हो बंदिदे एम्बुदागि
No one should get out of their house.
मनी निमा रुहरिके परपेटरे
Children all get inside.
मक्कल येल्दुसार वरिगे सेरिकोड़रे
Vigilant, careful.
यचर वागिरे निव यचर वस्त चित्तरागिरे
So, we will be very careful about the lion.
अद नाव इल्ले सिम्मा द कोर्तागि यचर दिन्दिर्तेवे
But the sad thing is, we believers are not half careful about the devil.
God has given him the permission to tempt us. He has not given him the permission to force us to commit sins. If Eve fell, who is responsible? Eve is responsible. Satan played a role behind the scene that we know. But the ultimate responsibility belongs to that woman. Now apply that truth to our life. Satan cannot force his way into any church. He cannot force his way into any family. He cannot force his way into your life or my life. He can come in only if we allow him. But very often, we blame the devil for our failure. Example. Suppose there is a division in an assembly. Or divided into two. What do we go around saying? Tell me, what do you go around saying? What would do brother Satan divided our church? Oh Satan divides churches? If Satan could divide churches, he would have divided all the churches in the world. Who divided the church? We don't want to say that huh? Oh we say the devil did it. My friend, the devil did not do it. He played a trick behind it. No, I suppose we two are elders, I am John and there is Peter, for example. So Satan will come and tell me. Whatever that Peter says, you should not agree. He is trying to become a big shot. So in the business meeting, whatever he says, you oppose. And he will go and tell Peter. Whatever that John says. Don't agree. If he insists on his opinion. You should say then we will meet separately. So John and Peter both agreed. So the meeting came. Difference of opinion. So John said. Nothing doing, I, we will not agree. And Peter and Patti said. Well if you don't agree, we don't want to meet with you. We will hire a place next door. Or we will meet afternoon here. Church divided. What do we say? Satan divided us. Is it true? Satan did not divide your church. John and Peter divided the church. Satan played a role behind it. But ultimately, John and Peter are responsible. There is a problem between husband and wife. Oh Satan broke our family. Really, is it true? That's not true. Satan tells the mother-in-law. Be very strict with your daughter-in-law. Otherwise, she will sit on your head. Whatever she says, you say no. And tells the daughter-in-law. When the mother-in-law says something, you don't bother. And both of them agreed. And in their day-to-day life. They behave like that. After some time. I don't know if such things happen in Karnataka. But in Kerala, it happens. And what do we say? Good family but Satan divided it. Mother-in-law divided it. And you're blaming the devil for what you did. See how subtle and cunning we are. We are not willing to acknowledge our failure. We say the devil did it. Devil didn't do it. He prompted you, that's true. But you said yes to him, that is why there is a trouble in the family. My dear brothers and sisters, this brings a great solemn responsibility on every one of us. We are responsible for breaking our church, our family or our life. You and I, we are responsible. Don't blame the devil for that. He will get an entry only if you give him an entry. If you don't give him an entry. Now suppose Peter and John said. Yes, we have some difference of opinion. But we will not fight. We will just forgive, we will just give in. Our opinion is not important. We will go together. Can Satan do anything to that church? He cannot do anything. So who is responsible? John and Peter are responsible. We break or make our life. And we are living in a world of deception and illusion saying Satan did it. Don't do that. We are responsible. If we say no to the devil. He cannot force his way in. David, uh, sent with Betshaba. Satan said. Come on, look at that beautiful woman there. Take a second look. Beautiful lady. What did David do? Okay, nice idea, good idea, I will do that. You know the rest of the story. Can the devil, can David say, oh, devil pushed me down into adultery? No. Satan told Joseph. Oh, look at that beautiful woman. She is asking you to make friends with them. Look at her. Say yes to her. What did Joseph say? No. I will not do that. I will not do that. What happened? He did not fall. Did Satan push David into adultery? Then why didn't he do, do that with Joseph? Why did Satan not push Joseph into adultery? I hope you understand properly what I am trying to say. It is in our capacity to say no or yes. If you live in intimate fellowship with God every day of your life. And see God's grace every day. God will give you the grace to say no. Satan will come to you. He will adjust all sorts of things. But he cannot push you down. He will get an entry only if you give him an entry. The next truth that I would like to show you. Why does he come in? What does he want to do? What is his plan? John chapter 10. And verse 10. John chapter 10 and verse 10. Ah, could you read that? Jesus says, the thief comes for three things. First to steal. To kill. And to destroy. That is what a thief comes for. Now who is the thief here? Is the thief, uh, the devil? Directly, it is not the devil. How do we know? In verse 8 of the same chapter. Jesus said, all whoever came before me are thieves and robbers. But the sheep did not hear them. So who are the thieves? All those who came before me. To mislead the sheep. There is a reference to false messias, false prophets, false teachers. So on the right interpretation of this verse. It is not directly talking about Satan. The thief is not Satan. Thief is false prophet. That is the interpretation of this passage. While that is the interpretation, this passage can have an application in our life. Who prompted these false teachers? Who sent them? It is Satan. Satan is the one who sent this false prophet, propelled them. He is the one who sent them. So indirectly. We can say, this is the devil's work. Directly, it is the false prophet. But indirectly, it is Satan's work. So in that sense, we will take it. Why does Satan come in? Number one, to steal. Satan comes into a life to steal. Steal what? You know a thief comes only to steal what is precious. A thief will not come into your house and take away your socks. He will not come and steal your kerchief. He will steal your mobile. He will take away your laptop. He will take away your gold. He will take away your money. Thief steals only what is precious. Satan also steals only what is precious. What is precious in a believer's life? His joy. His rest. His assurance of salvation. His confidence in God. His holiness. These are precious things in the life of a child of God. If you let the devil in. He will steal your joy. I told you earlier, he cannot steal your salvation. But he can steal the joy of your salvation. He will steal the rest in your life. He will steal your confidence in God. All that is good in your life, he will steal. Jesus said it clearly, that he will steal if you allow him. Knowing that. Will you allow him to come into your life? You know he will steal. Jesus said it. That is his character. You know it. Then will you allow him to come into your life? Suppose a thief comes to your house. A small thief. He lives in your neighborhood. Everybody knows he is a thief. He steals small, small things from houses. Oh, one night he comes and knocks at the door. And he says, sir, I am on my way to some place urgently. But the last bus is gone. My house is far away, I cannot go back. I must go by the next first bus. So can I stay in your house just for one night? You know he is a thief. But you know him because he lives in your neighborhood. Early morning I will go. Just one night only. Please help me. And you say, uh, okay, you stay one night, no problem. And you allow him one night. Next morning, four o'clock, he is gone. Oh, he kept his word, he said he will go in the morning and he has gone. Morning, you are looking for your phone. It was kept on the table. You ask your wife, did you take my phone? Wife says, no, I didn't take it. Where is the phone? Looks all around. It is not there. Ah, he has taken it. Where is my wallet? It was in the pant pocket. You search for it. It is not there. My wife's watch. It was kept on the table. Where is that? And husband and wife are crying. Oh, we lost our watch, our ballot, everything. Why are you crying? You knew he is a thief. A thief's job is to steal. You knew it. And you loved him. And now you are crying. What is the point in your crying? It is a useless cry. This is happening in the lives of many families and many believers. You let the devil in, in your marriage. When the proposal came. You did not seek God's will. You looked only for money. You looked only for beauty. You looked only for job. You looked only if the person is working abroad. You did not consider any spiritual qualification. Oh, we must get this, uh, marriage through. And you got it through. Now you are crying. Brother, please talk to our children. Only two weeks they stayed together. Please help us brother. I am not telling you stories, I am telling you what is happening in our midst. Now I am not saying that all marriage problems are because we let the devil in, that's what I am saying. As human beings, we all can have problems. But many problems are our own making. I know personally families like that. They let the devil in. Violated biblical divine principles. They took their own way. Now the family is in trouble. Now they are crying. Oh, nobody can solve our problem. They are going to separate next week. Why? You let the devil in. How sad it is. I can think of many, many families who have created trouble for themselves. He has stolen all that is good in the family life. Jesus said, be vigilant. He is roaming around. If you let him in, he will steal. We believers don't bother for all that. Many believers don't bother for the word of God. They want to do their own will. And they suffer the consequences of their deeds. My dear brothers and sisters. Why should we invite trouble upon ourselves? See, in human life, there are automatically troubles are there. Even if you ask God's job, you can still have troubles. God allows troubles for a purpose. That is there in everyone's life. But my question is. Why should you bring additional trouble into your life? By straying away from God's perfect plan, you are adding trouble to your natural troubles. What a sad thing. He comes to steal. Why should we allow him? Secondly. He comes to kill. That has many meanings. That has many meanings. Spiritual deadness he can bring. Lack of fellowship with God. Your intimacy with God is strained. Effect of death comes into your spiritual life. That can happen if you let the devil in. Not only that. He can bring in physical death also. Did you know that? Did you know that Satan can bring physical death into your life? Satan can cause death. In first Corinthians 11. People who take part on the Lord's table unworthily. Keeping sins in their life without confessing them, they take part on the Lord's table. When you take part on the Lord's table, you are saying, Lord, thank you for dying to set me free from my sin. At the same time, you are keeping sins in your life. And you are saying, thank you for dying for me. Yeah, that is contradiction. So in one Corinthians 11, we read. If you do that. Some will die. Now we cannot judge anyone. It is something between them and God. But the word of God says, if you take part from the Lord's table unworthily, you can be visited with death. Can you think of anyone whom Satan killed in the Bible? Old Testament, New Testament. Acts chapter 5. One husband and wife died. Who killed them? Ananias and Sapphira. Did they die in a motor accident? Did they die of cancer? How did they die? Peter said. Why have you allowed Satan to fill your heart? Peter asked Ananias. Why did you let the devil in? You allowed the devil in. What happened? He killed both husband and wife. What was the cause of their death? Sins prompted by the devil. In first Chronicles 21. You can read it later. David was prompted by the devil to count his people. And Job, his assistant, said, sir, don't do that. Maybe Satan, devil want, uh, David wanted to count it, uh, because of his pride. Job said, don't do it. David said, no, 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 I am going to do it. And David did it. God was angry. You read one Chronicles 21 later. God's punishment fell. You know how many people died? Seventy thousand people died. Who killed them? Not tsunami. It was David's sin. Who prompted that sin? The devil. He comes to kill. How many of us want to be killed by the devil? Number three. Destroy. He comes to totally mess up. That means every fiber of your family, your life, your church is messed up. Total destruction. We can see some churches like that. We can see some individual lives like that, totally messed up. I can think of some families also, totally messed up. You cannot untie the knots. The problems in those families are so complicated that you cannot solve it. Total destruction. That is what the devil does. Jesus wanted. Don't let him in. He will steal. He will kill. He will also destroy. Finally, a last important point. No one will invite the devil to come. Will anyone of you invite the devil and say, please come into my life? Please come into our church. Will anybody invite? Nobody will invite. Then how does he come in? If we don't invite him, then how can he come in? Now this is a very important point that we should, uh, heed to in our day-to-day life. Devil comes in when we entertain and tolerate his characteristics in our life. Did everybody understand that? You will not give him a chair and say, please come into my house. No, he doesn't come like that. But if we allow his characteristics in our life. Through that, he comes in. Okay, what are the characteristics of the devil? Jesus himself has said that. Come to John chapter 8. And in John 8, verse, uh, 44. You are of your father, the devil, and the desires of your father you want to do, he was a murderer from the beginning. He was a murderer. The spirit of murder. The spirit behind murder. What is that spirit? Now, you will say, "Oh, we don't murder anybody, we don't kill anybody." But what is the spirit behind murder? In the first epistle of John, chapter 3, verse 15. 1:5. Whoever hates his brother is a murderer. So who is a murderer according to the Bible? Not only one who stabs another. He who hates his brother. Hatred is the root or seed of murder. You hate somebody. That hatred increases. That's what happened between Saul and David. Saul was jealous of David. And he was afraid of him. And he hated him. Finally, he said, "I will kill him." Where did murder come from? Which is the seed? Hatred. When you harbor anger and hatred in your heart, you are a murderer according to 1 John 3:15. He who hates his brother is a murderer. That is a characteristic of the devil. In John 8, Jesus said, "He is a murderer from the beginning." Anger and hatred is a characteristics of the devil. When we entertain and tolerate and encourage those attitudes in our life, in our heart, we are entertaining the devil. Do we do that? Do we entertain anger towards others? See, believers don't take these things seriously. In the Christendom, anger and hatred and all that, people don't take it seriously. But the Bible takes it seriously. Do you keep anger in your heart towards someone? Do you foster, encourage hatred or bitterness towards others? Do you kill others? No, you don't kill anyone with a knife. With your tongue, do you kill anyone? You know, there is a word called in English, "character assassination." That means killing the good name of someone. In English, there is a word called blasphemy. That is usually translated as "devadusnam," that's how we translate it. But the actual meaning of that word is slightly different. It has come from two Latin words. Blast and femi. What is blast? Explosion. Femi means fame, good name. What is the meaning of that word? Blasting the good name of someone. Have you done that? Terrorist blast. No, in a Bangalore hotel the other day, there was a bomb blast. And what do we call them? Oh, terrorist activity. Have you blasted, have you conducted any blast? No, 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 we don't do any blast. Think about it. Have you blasted the good name of someone? So many people do that. Many women, in gossiping, they blast the good name of others. Many men, they write evil about their brothers and circulate it, thus they are bomb blasting. Murder. Whose character is that? Satan's character. When we allow that, we are allowing the devil. Another characteristic is jealousy. In 1 John, chapter 3, it is clearly stated. You see, in verse 12, 1 John 3:12, we read about Cain. "Who was of the wicked one and murdered his brother." And why did he murder him? Because his works were evil and his brothers righteous. Cain murdered his brother. Here is a New Testament commentary about what happened in Genesis. Why did he murder his brother? His offering was not accepted, his brothers was accepted. What do we call that? Jealousy. My preaching is not liked, but his preaching is liked. That is jealousy. Do we entertain jealousy in our heart? Think of your own life. See, general Christendom. Believers jealous of one another. Here it says, "Cain is of the devil." And he was jealous. What does that mean? Jealousy is a characteristic of the devil. Cain manifested the characteristic of the evil one and murdered his brother, that's what it says there. When you entertain jealousy in your heart, you are letting the devil in. Pride. That's from the devil. All of you know that. Lucifer. In the first instance, he was proud. In Isaiah 14, you read that. He said, "I will go up." "I want to put my throne equal to the throne of God." Thinking highly of oneself. Whose characteristic is that? Satan's. Do we entertain pride in our heart? Proud about whatever. Are you proud about anything? Your spiritual gifts? Your ministry? Your beauty? Your money? Your position? Very proud. You have let the devil in. Because that is his character. Jesus' character is humility. Matthew 11:29, Jesus said, "Learn of me, for I am meek and humble." In the book of Timothy, we read, "You should not appoint a young man to the leadership of the church, because he, what happened, the devil can happen to him because of pride." Pride is of the devil. That's why devil fell. Lucifer fell. Not because of drunkenness. Not because of immorality. He fell because of pride. Another sin, characteristic of the devil is lying. John 8:44, Jesus said that. He is a liar from the beginning and he is the father of lies. In Acts, chapter 5, Ananias and Sapphira, they lied to the Holy Spirit. In 1 Peter 2:1, Peter says, "Give up all lying, lay aside all lying." Do we have lies in our life? Here is another thing people don't take seriously. I am really, really surprised to know that many believers tell lies. I am asking you a question directly tonight. Do you tell lies? Do you tell lies? That is from the devil. So pride, lying, jealousy, anger, hatred, any of these things when you entertain in your heart, you are letting the devil in. You don't have to invite the devil. You just keep these wrong attitudes in your heart. And devil comes in through them. Now, in the beginning, I said, "I'll ask you a question at the end." In the beginning, I asked you, "Do you allow the devil into your life?" What is our answer? No, 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 we don't allow that. Same question I am going to ask now. Do you allow lying in your life? What's your answer? No lying? Do you allow pride in your life? Do you have jealousy in your life? Do you have any unwholeness in your life? Apostle John says, "Devil sins from the beginning, any sin is from the devil." When we entertain any of these sins, we are opening the door for devil to come in. Satan doesn't need a four-lane highway to come. He needs a small lane to come. So what is our decision at the end of this message? I will never give a foothold for the devil in my life. I will never give him a base of operation from my life. Will you take that decision? Now, when you hear this, you may say, oh, as human beings, when you live in this world, sometimes anger and jealousy all can come in our life, how can we live without it? You are right. As we live in this world, anger can come. There is good anger and bad anger. I am talking about bad anger. Jealousy can come. When someone preaches better than me, I can become jealous in my heart. Even Paul was in trouble of being proud because of his spiritual gifts. It can come. But when it comes, the moment you realize it, you confess it to God. A thought of anger came in your heart. A thought of bitterness towards somebody came. What do we do about it? We do nothing. Most believers do nothing about it. So Satan established his base there. What are we supposed to do? Oh, I had a wrong thought of jealousy towards their brother. I realized it. The spirit of God convicts me of that. I cry out to God, "It's your God, I am sorry." I confess it. 1 John 1:9. "If we confess our sins, he is faithful and just to forgive us and cleanse us from all unrighteous." Refuse to allow wrong attitudes in your life. We must deliberately choose not to give the devil a territory in our life. As I said earlier, wrong attitudes can come. It comes in your life, it comes in my life. But the moment it comes, you must honestly go to God. "God, I am sorry for that wrong thought I had about that sister." "Lord, I am sorry for being jealous about that brother." I acknowledge my thought of anger and bitterness. I confess it. Give me grace. Help me to keep my heart clean. I do not want any of Satan's characteristics in my life. I want to live a holy life. Is that your attitude? Then Satan will have no hold on you. So don't get discouraged when bitterness or anger or any such thing comes into your heart. The moment you realize it, confess it. Settle it. Ask for forgiveness. Ask for God's grace. God will help you. That is how you live a clean life. Don't let the devil in. When you allow these characteristics in your life, you are letting the devil in. As we now disperse tonight, what are we all going to decide? All brothers and sisters, trusting in the grace of God, I will not entertain any of Satan's characteristics in my life. When they come sometimes, immediately I will deal with it. I'll confess it. And I will cry out to God for grace. "God, help me." When God sees that you are honest, God will help you. I'll say one more thing and close. I want to ask you two questions. Is it possible to live a perfectly sinless life without any anger, without any bitterness, any jealousy coming to your heart? Sinlessly perfect? What's your answer? No. That is not possible. Second question. Is it possible to be honest in life? What is the answer? It is possible. You cannot be sinlessly perfect. But you can be honest. Every time you fail, lift your hand up. "Lord, I fail." I confess it. I need your grace. If you are honest, God will give you grace. God will lift you up. You will have a wonderful life. In Ephesians 4, "Give no place to the devil." But when you read that context, But when you read that context, you know, in the English Bible, I don't know how it is in Canada, in the English Bible, it says, and give no place to the devil. That means it is connected to what is said earlier. It is talking about anger there. It is talking about evil talk there. It is in that context that we are told, don't give place to the devil. So that passage teaches us we give permission to the devil, entry to the devil when we entertain these sinful attitudes in our heart. Learn to be honest before God. And God will help you. May God bless these words to you. Amen.